Two times on in the past few months. I'm not sure that the folks were conflicting necessarily, but I'll just pull back from brewery experience at the beginning of the pandemic. We had some, we have a certain relationship, I would say, with landlords, perfectly nice people. But the relationship was sometimes tense. There was something about the beginning of the pandemic where people sort of really wanted to help each other out. And so we actually were able to, I was able to get the two sides together, the rest of the ownership of the brewery and landlords, and we were able to work out some kind of a an agreement that allowed us to keep up on the rent and stay open. And they were gracious enough to, to accept. Don't know where the relationship stands now, but it was, it was nice to come together then.
Moving on to the third question, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths and also the three greatest areas in need of improvement for the city of Ypsilanti?
I think in my supplemental questions, I made some of those priorities as far as the the greatest issues. One of those is safety and quiet enjoyment. And that ranges anything from some of the recent violence that we're seeing in New Park Ridge to traffic issues that we're seeing really around the city. There are a lot of issues that we're having, especially now during the pandemic with, with quiet enjoyment and folks being able to just live their lives in, in relative peace. The second problem or weakness that I think we have is what to do about affordable housing. It's, 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 I'm not sure it's at a crisis point, but it's definitely at a point where we need to do something quickly. And then the third thing I would say is really our tax base. We may see some, some uptick there with Water Street in several years. But we, we've got to do something about keeping properties on the tax rolls, you know, in my opinion. You know, the EMU parking garage was an example, I think of, you know, where council wisely decided to give it a shot to be back on the rolls again. And the folks that pay the highest tax put in tend to be renters because those properties aren't homesteaded. And so their, their pro rata share is much greater than homeowner, for example. The three strengths of Ypsilanti are it's a, it's a community and, you know, a lot of places use it as a tagline. But I think you can, you can drop down in Ypsilanti and in two months you can know almost everyone. And it has a real community vibe. I mean, all I can say is from living other places is this is a real place. I'm not really sure how else to describe it. The other thing that we have is there are people who always want to make things better. Now, we might not always agree on how best to do that. And some of us are louder than others and some of us are more forceful than others. But it's a place where we, I feel like we're all moving more or less in the same direction. The third thing I'll say is kind of about our business community. I think a lot of places you'll see that business is really at odds with with community and what benefits to the greater community might be. In my experience, for the most part, I have not seen that to be the case in Ypsilanti, especially among business owners who are, you know, born and bred in Ypsilanti. And that kind of spreads to the folks who come here too. There's, there's a way that I think we go about things here that is very conducive to a community atmosphere and not taking advantage of one another. And that's three benefits and three problems, right? I think I, I think I got it. Okay.
Question four, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please specify where and how you would reduce funding.
Yeah, I can't really speak to specific areas of waste in the budget other than what I said previously about expanding and growing the tax base. And that's, that's really as specific as I would, I would want to go by, you know, without, without guessing or.
Question five, the city is in negotiations with developers for Water Street. Have you been following the meetings and are you in favor of the project, including the affordable housing component that is proposed?
This might be a bit of an unfair question because as I have been a panelist on almost all the meetings. I would say yes, I am more or less in favor of the the development as it is. I would like to see more density in order to bring the cost down and I would like to see more than the 10% slated for affordable housing. I think, given our unique situation in the county, as far as what our median income is compared to what the counties is, we, we really do need more affordable units. And we need greater density so that the price of those units is actually affordable for the people who live here.
Why do you want to be representative for Ward one at this time? And what do you have to offer?
Well, I think since the beginning, the first, since the first time I interviewed to be appointed, I think a lot of, a lot of you asked if I would do a write-in or if I would apply again. And my answer then was I would consider it if I thought that I could be useful. You know, I didn't want to just be on council filling space. There did come a point when I thought and felt very clearly that I was being useful. And particularly with some of the real estate related activity going on with Water Street and also some interesting zoning work that can be done on the south side. My, my skill set lends very nicely with that. And I do feel that I am actually needed. It's less of a, you know, what do I want to do thing? And, and I feel like I actually owe something to the city. I have a skill set that can be used. And I would like for it to be used.
What are the top one or two priorities that you think the city needs to address? And what are your thoughts on how that might be done?
Well, I, I probably covered that, but one of those is one of those is this zoning issue. In the sixties and seventies, there was a section of the Park Ridge area that was essentially bulldozed in the name of urban renewal. And a month or so ago, going through the code of ordinances and the zoning code, you know, we found a way to sort of fix that and give back a little bit of what was taken during that timeframe. That's going to be a really long project and the next phase really is getting into community involvement and getting input and buy-in. That's something that I feel very strongly needs to happen in order to improve equity in the built environment in that area and hopefully be a model for other neighborhoods to see that the sort of Euclidean zoning is not, does not need to be a way of life for every neighborhood in the city. I think this could be a great model for that. That's work that started that I feel very strongly needs to be finished. And I think I can be instrumental to that. The second one is this quiet enjoyment issue and whether that be traffic concerns, speeding or violence. You know, frankly, as far as the traffic goes, I, I think I'm somewhere between this sort of temporary stopgap measures and sort of total overhaul of how we design streets or redesign streets. I'm not really sure yet where I fall on that. I know there's an affordability issue. But I really would like to see us be a little more imaginative and a little more progressive in how we think about our road design and road safety and traffic calming. The other part of quiet enjoyment is the violence issue. You know, just the other night I, I hear gunshots on my street and I know they're hearing them in the Park Ridge area and they're experiencing issues in New, in New Park Ridge where people are getting holes blown through their living rooms. Again, how to, how to solve that? I don't, I don't know that I can come up with a definitive answer in an interview, but I will, I will work on it. In fact, there's a meeting next week where I intend to find out a little bit more about it. This will be the second meeting. But I am willing to work with the police department and the actual management company, as well as the housing commission and residents to figure out what needs to be done and then how to actually get it done. And this is another area where I think that, you know, this real estate skill and ability to property management really would come into play. There are some management techniques that I think could be applied in New Park Ridge that are not currently being applied. And so I'll be looking forward to having conversations, whether or not I'm, whether or not I'm selected with, with Zach and the actual management company there.
What does public service mean to you?
I think the most important aspect of public service is sacrifice. And by sacrifice, what I mean is an exchange of something of a lower order in order to receive something of a higher order. And so the lower, the lower thing would be your time, effort and energy. And what you're trading that for in service is the good of the people around you, the improvement of your community. And I think a duty to service is very important. And I think that's what service means to me. It's a, it's a sacrifice. It's a trade. And a good trade.
Have you ever been a member of a city commission? If so, did you participate to the best of your ability?
I, I guess I don't, I don't think that the DDA council is a commission. But I guess it may as well for this purpose. Yes, I did fully participate. After my first meeting, I joined the operations and finance committee. And I faithfully attended meetings of both the executive board and of the operations and finance committee. So yes, I did fully participate. I voted on everything and I actually had discussion on, on most things. I, I hope the meetings aren't running as long now that I'm gone. But I did, I definitely did participate.
How long have you lived in the city of Ypsilanti?
I, well, this is sort of a long story. So I was born in Kalamazoo when my mom was visiting my grandmother. And that's why I wasn't born in Ypsilanti. And I think we, we came back and then my stepdad was in the military. I went to boy Colorado for half a year, came back here, went to Perry School. First grade, we moved to Maryland and back here in fifth grade, all the way through high school. Went to college at Western and moved back. Spent a couple of years in Houston, moved back and I've been here since. So I would say if you take the aggregate of all those years, 20?
What makes Ypsilanti valuable to entities outside of the city? What are our greatest assets as a city?
Could you read the first part of the question? I want to be sure I'm answering it fully.
What makes Ypsilanti valuable to entities outside of the city? What are our greatest assets as a city?
I think when we're looking at entities outside, from the outside looking in, it kind of depends on what the purpose is. I think the, the fact that and I'm, I guess I'm mostly thinking of business entities. The fact that you can couple inexpensive, inexpensive property, whether you're renting or buying, with access to a buyer population from Ann Arbor or the western part of the county. That absolutely makes us a magnet for businesses. And I'm, I'm assuming that's what entities is referring to. The other great advantage, especially in property development, and I know this is going to sound strange to some people, is we are a very liberal city. And that is a definite advantage for property developers because they know, once they pay the price of entry, competition is going to be relatively scarce. Things are not going to move very quickly. And that is actually the appeal of very liberal cities for real estate development, which is why you don't see a ton in very conservative cities. I think as far as an entity, especially a business entity from the outside looking in, those are the, those are the strengths. And sorry if that's too caustic or if you're looking for something else, but I think that's, I think the way I took it is the way it was meant.
Prior to reading the last question, the second interviewee has joined. Could you please get off and then come back in potentially 10 minutes, five minutes?
Would you repeat that again, Andrew?
The second interviewee has joined the meeting. Please get off the meeting and then return in about five minutes. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Last question, what is the greatest responsibility of a city council person in the city of Ypsilanti?
I think the most important thing in Ypsilanti is to show up and do the job. And be, you know, being responsive to the residents. There are a lot of issues and a lot of things, you know, really small things that I've been made aware of over the past, you know, eight weeks or so. And some of them are really small, but when you can be responsive and, and take charge and take care of those things, even the small things, people really appreciate that. And it improves faith in local government. It improves civic responsibility among the, the citizens. And I think it's really important. It's really important just to show up and, and do the work.
Okay, that completes the questions. So I'm going to put you into the attendees. You can listen to the remainder of the interviews.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Chance, appreciate it.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Chance. And we will speak before the, the end. Um, thank you.
We can wait a couple of minutes until Mr. Gaines joins.
Mayor Pro Tim, would you take the gavel for a couple of moments, please? Thank you.
Council, the, Mr. Gaines is here for his interview. Would you like to wait for the mayor to return? Probably, I imagine.
Yes. Wait for her to return so that she can hear all the answers to the questions, of course, but we do want to welcome Mr. Gaines and thank you for being here virtually with us for the interview. The clerk will read all of the questions submitted by council, so they'll be anonymously read by the clerk. And then you will be able to respond. And it should be quick and painless, I believe. So we're just going to wait a few moments for the mayor to return and then we can get started unless I miss anything.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gaines. How are you?
Pretty good. And yourself, Councilman Morgan?
Oh, you know, some days are better than others.
Got the jitters a little bit, but I'm here.
Sorry. It should be quick and painless.
Good evening, Mr. Gaines. How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Oh, you already answered that question.
Councilman Will Coxon.
Good to see you here. Just your safe and dry.
Yeah. How is Ms. Walkoff?
Well, I will leave that for you to discuss with her. She's listening too.
Oh, nice.
Good evening, Mr. Gaines.
How you doing, Madam Mayor?
I am quite well. How are you?
I'm pretty good.
Good. Thank you for reaching out and applying for the Ward one seat. How we're going to handle the interview is Clerk Colinga has questions that he will ask you. These questions have been submitted by council to him and we will sit back and listen to your answers. Clerk Colinga.
Given this is being filled by vote of council rather than constituents, how do you plan to represent Ward one? That is, where do you find yourself on the spectrum between representing the opinions of your constituents versus representing your opinions? What do you do when those two are not congruent?
Could you please repeat the question? You were kind of echoing. I don't know if it's my phone or yours.
Sure, not a problem. Given this seat is being filled by vote of council rather than your constituents, how do you plan to represent Ward one? That is, where do you find yourself on the spectrum between representing the opinions of your constituents versus representing your opinions? What do you do when those two are not congruent?
My first response will always be the ask the people. To definitely during my election, my thing was never to tell them what I was going to do, but more so ask them, how do they want Ward one to look? So I will always confine that with the people and some of the elders of the community before making any decision and with council.
Question two, describe a time when you brought together conflicting groups or people to achieve a common goal. How did you establish the commonality of the parties?
I could think of one occasion with International Village. I was on a panel in Ward one at Park Ridge Center. And we had a great meeting and at the end of the meeting, we didn't have an execution plan because we had the purchase agreement meeting coming up. And so I spoke out and gathered nice 10 or 12 people stating that I would be over Ward one and I would hit every door with flyers educating them on the purchase agreement. And it turned out to be one of the biggest meetings at the Freight House we had a few years back in a long time in the city of Ypsilanti as a city council meeting. Another time was with our Warmers Center a few years back, I gathered a lot of people on social media due to some complaints about, do we have a shelter or not? And me and a few other people at the community started the Warmers Center there at the Riverside Art Center. But we heard the complaints of the people, we gathered the people and we executed a plan.
Question three, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths and also the three greatest areas in need of improvement for the city of Ypsilanti?
Three greatest strengths, I believe one of the first ones is us having a CBO. Sometimes a community benefits ordinance could be tricky if the agreement isn't real firm, but us having it gives us a better advantage than we have before not having it. So I look at our, us adopting that was one of the best things our city could, could have done. You said three things. One of the things I feel also be a strength for the city is us, no matter how the turnout today will be, we will have a black corral for the first time. If you look at our city's motto, it's heritage, diversity and pride. The diversity, this will be the first time that this has really been challenged and something new. So with that new corral, regardless who council points today, it will be new ideas and a new energy because this will be the first time ever in history, the city of Ypsilanti ever had this. So I look at that as a strength.
Question four, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please specify where and how you would reduce funding.
No, I think everything so far, the meetings I've been paying attention to, far as the dam, the developments, everything has been pretty on point. I actually think it's recommendable of council to be catering to the situation with our dam so much, knowing that it's only so many people that that will actually affect that live off the water. I think that was real big, that, that says a lot. They're saying that council and our mayor is hearing the people. So I can't think of nothing that our local government is spending money on that I disagree with.
Question five, the city is in negotiations with developers for Water Street. Have you been following the meetings and are you in favor of the project, including the affordable housing component that has been proposed?
Yes, I believe to my knowledge it will be 10%. We'll go to affordable housing. Yes, I believe we kind of got to get what we can. We have to do something with the land eventually. So I'm in support of it 100%.
Why do you want to be representative for Ward one at this time? And what do you have to offer?
I want to be a representative because I'm a long life resident here in the city of Ypsilanti. I've been a South Sider on and off my whole life. My family's been rooted on the south side on Ward one my whole entire life of being here. So I feel obligated. When I look at the history of those before me, the living ancestors such as our mayor Ricky Jefferson, Ronnie Peterson, et cetera. I just take a pride in wanting to be in that seat, represent the people. I have a, I feel I have a strong connection with the people. So I feel like that'd be one of my biggest strengths or things that I could bring to the table as council is connecting with the people. Every decision we make affects thousands of people. So I think that's, I think that's the question you asked me. You kind of asked the two questions I want. So I think that's, I think that's the question you asked me. You kind of asked him two questions, and I'm trying my best to follow you.
Question seven, what are the top one or two priorities that you think the city needs to address? And what are your thoughts on how that might be done?
One would be making Ward 1 more inclusive. We kind of sometimes, I believe that we kind of just shove the information of Ward 1 versus talking to Ward 1 as a whole and seeing the majority of what the thoughts are. What was the second part of the question, Andrew?
It's what are the top one or two priorities that you think the city needs to address? And the second part is, what are your thoughts on how that might be done?
Okay, okay. My second one would be making all our wards more inclusive. A small example of a First Fridays, it's a lot of our residents and citizens of Ward 1 that don't know anything about that and been here for a long time, and that's just a small example. But just making all the wards more inclusive to where we not looking at Ward 1 as the vulnerable side of town. So I think uplifting Ward 1 and making it more inclusive with the other wards will be, I believe that's answering the question.
Question eight, what does public service mean to you?
Put in the people first. The word public servant, public is in front of servant, so the public comes first. So always just serving the people and being there and putting them first, knowing that this job I'm taking is a sacrifice. You know, every decision I make will be scrutinized and always, you know, putting the people first.
Have you ever been a member of a city commission? If so, did you participate to the best of your ability?
Yes, I did one term as a human relation commissioner, and I felt I was real active. I felt like I added a lot of connections with the people when I got on board with our Human Relations Commission. I thought I helped speed a lot of things up, just me being kind of radical and just wanting to tackle things right away. Far as my attendance while I was on as a commissioner, I had a few attendance issues based around a couple of deaths, which were my mom and first cousin. Outside that, I feel I was 100% active and proactive because I brought a lot of ideas to the table.
How long have you lived in the city of Ypsilanti?
Thirty-three years.
What makes Ypsilanti valuable to entities outside of the city? What are our greatest assets as a city?
I believe our property. I believe a lot of cities that's very close to us prey on the city of Ypsilanti, and they look at it as either a rest stop or somewhere they could purchase land for cheap and never lived there and just rented out. So I feel with us having such an area that everybody is so glued on by us having new ideas and a new team and everything, I think we could flip that and kind of use that value we have for our advantage involving other cities.
What is the greatest responsibility of a city council person in the city of Ypsilanti?
Greatest responsibility would be putting the people first, especially of your ward, listening to the concerns. I tend to saw during elections, us politicians, we beat down people's door, and we have all these ideas and all this convincing things to say to get the vote, and then we don't show up. So I think just steady putting the people first at all times. I think that's a real easy job to do. It's actually harder to try to convince thousands of people in the ward your ideas of what you think. I think it's so much easier to just simply ask and do surveys and go with the majority.
Okay, that completes the questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines, once again for your application. Thank you for attending the interview. If you would, I believe Mr. Halinga is asking those that have been interviewed to go into the waiting room. Is that correct, Mr. Halinga?
Yes, Mr. Gaines, I'm going to demote you to an attendee so you can listen to the final interview and then potentially counsel deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Counsel, the next interview is scheduled for 7 o'clock. The applicant should arrive at City Hall in just a few minutes. I'll get him set up in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Boy, Annie, he looks like he's getting bigger and bigger. No, I'm saying, he looks like he's going to be too big for you to handle in a little bit.
Well, I hope he doesn't get bigger. He's already pretty big. He's bigger than my old cat. I thought my old cat was the biggest cat I'd ever have.
He certainly looked like a lap full when you had him just now.
Well, yeah, he likes to jump up on my lap when I'm sitting in my, I'm in my kitchen right now, and he also likes to lay next to my laptop. So it's like, it's a cat magnet.
Has he stopped messing with your plants?
He has. I've relocated most of them, but I did put the snake plants back behind my couch, and he hasn't messed with them. Yeah, I had to lift up my big palm plant a few feet off the ground, so it's safely away from the cats.
Good.
Yeah, his sister is still getting used to her new home, though. She's kind of, I don't know, she likes to be left alone.
That's the other one that you got, the other new?
Yeah, the other, she's a girl. So I don't know, yeah. They usually, at their previous owners, they were like relatively friendly with each other, but I think she's still getting used to being in a new place. And my apartment is just like a one-bedroom apartment, so there's not, like, it's big, but it's not big enough for her to hide that well, I guess, not yet at least.
Okay. So is the rest of council ready for the holiday? Everyone staying home?
Absolutely.
I'm happily avoiding my family this year.
Me too.
Staying home as well.
I'm still preparing the things I would prepare if I were going, but I just have to prepare for two or three different houses now.
Yeah, that's funny. My brother moved into my apartment building, so we are splitting the duties. I'm going to make, going to make half, and he's going to make half.
So your brother moved back to Michigan?
Yeah, I don't know if I like, yeah, so he moved back in June, and he lives in my apartment building. He lives right below me.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's nice.
It's very convenient, that's for sure. He lived in Florida for a few years, so.
So Councilmember Morgan, you all set for the holiday and the weekend?
We don't do holidays really, but I usually provide space for people to come pick up a few things. Usually, we just have some extra rations out there just to give a few things away, but we definitely will open our space up for people to come grab and go.
Yeah.
I'm not a good cookie. There's just, most of the food I eat is just available. It's just a step below edible.
Okay. Councilmember Simmons, you all prepared?
Yeah, yeah, just very low-key. Usually, I would do stuff with, you know, different size of the family, but yeah, just real low-key. So we're actually not making a lot of the food. We decided to pick it up, though, to support a local business. So we're going to get some food that's been made, you know, to do that.
Okay, well, that's thoughtful.
Counsel, Mr. Ossler is present for the interview.
All right, Mr. Ossler, thank you so much for filling out the application and consenting to come in for the interview. We appreciate your interest in this position. And counsel has submitted some questions to Mr. Halinga, the clerk, and he will read those questions to you, and we will listen. And once the interview is over, then Mr. Halinga will have you retire to the waiting room. But thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Halinga.
Given this seat is being filled by vote of council rather than your constituents, how do you plan to represent Ward 1? That is, where do you find yourself on the spectrum between representing the opinions of your constituents versus representing your own opinions? What do you do when those two are not congruent?
Well, interesting question, but at the same time, I would say I would have to just stand firm and go forward. If there's any dispute or whatever, I'm not easily wrinkled, you know? And if I have a difference of opinions, we all have just difference of opinions, and we should be able to disagree and agree to disagree. So I would just say, just go for what you know. That was an interesting question, but am I allowed to take the mask off?
Sure, if you're in the room by yourself, yes.
Yeah, nobody's in there. I just feel kind of hot.
Okay, you can take it off, yes.
Moving on to the second question, describe a time when you brought together conflicting groups or people to achieve a common goal. How did you establish the commonality of the parties?
Well, I did this with the, I started a walkout back in 1974 at the high school. First year it opened up, they had a dispute with the tenants' policy. At least I did in a particular class. It was my English class, and I was supposed to graduate in 1973 in the old school, but they were closing up. And I quit in my senior year because my counselor told me that I was all set to go, and I had already fitted for cap and gown and hanging out with my classmates for all them years. I was ready to walk the stage with them, you know? We, we, we were, 1973, I thought was the best class, but I guess everybody thanked me. Anyway, in '74, I went back, my mom told me to go back to school or get some kind of job, so I decided to do her first thing. She said, go back to school, so I went back up to the new high school and enrolled in a tenant class, and I was doing the same thing that I was doing at the old school at the new school, which back in those days, we did a lot of skipping. And one day I walked in, and her name was, what was her name? It's oh, wow, I can't even think of her name right now. Anyway, she said to me, she says, I don't know what you keep coming for. You don't miss too many classes, you know? I said, what are you talking about? I do good in this class, you know, which I did. I wasn't straining or nothing, you know, but I always somehow managed to keep a decent grade. But then she called me up there, she showed me, I said, where my name at? She showed me the name. And I saw all these As up there. I said, hey, you know, see, I told you I was doing good. Look at all them As. She said, that's absent. So that blew my mind, and I had anticipated on graduating that year in '74. Now, don't look too good. I'm not getting my half a credit. So I said, you can go talk to the counselor. So I went down to the counselor and talked to her, and his name was Mr. Green. And he said to me, he says, well, you know, they got a state law, if you're not in school at a certain many days, that you got to be there, then you got to do it over or whatever. And he said, you can go over there and talk to the board. And at that time, it was superintendent Barber. And I went over there to talk to him. He wouldn't even see me, wouldn't talk or converse or, you know, have somebody talk to me, said, no, you won't. I said, okay. So I happened to be the president of the class club of '74, our it wasn't this class council or anything, it was just a class club that we had on the side on the South Side. And it was called Prestige 74, you know, people like Robert Evans, Julius Johnson, Marty Hurst, people from the South Side. That was my sister's year, and I was supposed to graduate the year before. I'm just reminding you. I'm probably making this story too long. I'm probably tired of hearing my voice, but I'm trying to hurry up and get to it. But anyway, I went to the the meeting that night and asked them on the way I get this idea from, but I asked them, I said, y'all want to start a walkout? And they was gung ho, yeah, let's do this, you know, all this kind of stuff. So we went up to what was then called the Oyo Building up on Monroe Street. Sharon Newton was one of the ladies that was our boss, because I got a job during the summertime as a teenager up there, you know? And she said we could use the memegra, whatever that was, it was the paper that you put in, and you wind it like this, and it had blue ink and all that kind of stuff, you know, not like what they got now for copiers, but it did us good. We had all these papers run out, and we decided that we're going to pass out the flyers the next day. We did all this in 24 hours. But we passed papers out, and they were papers all over the floor at the high school. And it was obvious that it was out to the staff there that we were planning to walk out. I was hearing things, people saying, oh, I'm not walking out. I do good at my class, all that kind of stuff, you know? And we got to thinking, at least I did, and I told them, think, what are we going to do, you know? And there was this one guy that came up to me. His name was Joey Blackburn. He was a white guy with freckles, red hair. He said, I think it's great what you guys are doing, you know, I'd like to help out if I can. And I said, well, we got this right now, but I keep you in mind like that, you know? And suddenly I got this idea. I told Robert Evans, I said, I ain't got no money, but we need to get some bull, three bullhorns and three whistles. And he said he got the money. He went over to, what was the name of that store? It's a sporting goods store on Washington. Anyway, he went in there and he came back with three whistles and three bullhorns. And I said, where's the white guy at, Joey Blackburn? And they found him and brought him to me. I said, all of us, it's like four of us. We had three guys that were standing at the main doors of Ypsie High School with the bullhorn and the whistle. Told Joey at 10:45, which is first lunch break, I want you to pull that fire alarm, which is right there. And I wasn't supposed to be doing anything, because if they caught me doing anything, I was out because I couldn't play sports and none of that. I went back to school to get my diploma. That was the whole object of what it was all about. And, but I couldn't stand the fact that I wasn't getting my half a credit for that English class. As you said, I missed too many days that we did this thing. And at 10:45, Joey Blackburn pulled the fire alarm, and everybody started coming out the doors whether they wanted to or not. And they were actually like led like the sheep to the slaughter with the bullhorns. They thought it was some legal thing, and everybody went out into the parking lot. And that's the time when I got involved. And everybody went out into the parking lot and that's the time when I got involved. Because I wasn't supposed to be doing anything. But anyway, I got up on the bullhorn. We'd already told them to call Channel Four, Channel Seven, Channel Two, Channel Fifty. Ann Arbor News, Ypsilanti Press at that time we had and we made a big hoopla about it. Suddenly we had grieving parents coming from everywhere talking about they wanted to do this and do that. I'm sorry. Anyway, we got the walkout. We achieved the thing. We got two weeks, you know, I think school was out to decide this new attendance policy and all this kind of stuff. And then, once again, I walked away from school. I just got tired of it. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I guess I didn't want it, you know. So I walked away in that year. I didn't get my high school diploma until ten years later, when I went to adult education in nineteen eighty two, eighty three. I don't know if I'm, I answered your question, but I helped the tennis policy get changed. And the people that was against me, I got more than what they bargained for. And our class Prestige Seventy Four felt very good about doing what we did. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Hilinga of, yeah. He was muted.
Sorry about that. Question three, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths and also the three greatest areas in need of improvement for the city of Ypsilanti?
Well, say strengths, I'd say the diversity that has here and opportunity. Two, the people, three. Strength wise. And what they need, I would think, is stimulation, new ideas, growth within the city, stimulating economy for positive things, you know, things for everybody, but it had to be broken. I had vision years ago, but sometimes people aren't ready for your vision, or maybe it seems so far fetched, so, you know.
Question four, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please specify where and how you would reduce funding.
Well, to tell the truth, I don't know about the city budget, because I haven't been involved internally in your, you guys' affairs. And when I heard about the position being open and I thought about it and I said, well, I've done so many other things in this city from going to school in the education system, from the kindergarten all the way up to adult education program, going to Washington, Eastern Michigan University. Ran for city council against U of Tate back in the day. I think it was maybe after Ypsilanti song, my song, Ypsilanti became official city song. And I've done just about everything. I was one of the instigators and probably the main reason why the Black historic festival started on the south side. I was in Sharon Newton's class and she came to me, I mean, not class, the job, and asked me, do I think our manager will let our band come down in the field? And I said, I'll I'll ask him and you can give me your number and I'll have him call you. And that's what happened. The soulmates, we were called back in those days. We went down there, performed and we started. I don't know, I seem to be that's that's what kicked off the Black Festival, but I I seem to be a spark. Or some things always happen around me. And I wanted to give it a shot in the city to see what I could do. I mean, you can complain all the time. But if you don't get involved or try to get things changed, then your complaints are null, you know. So I thought I'd give it a shot and see what I could do at least for two years. And if, you know, if if I got a chance.
The city is in negotiations with developers for Water Street. Have you been following the meetings? And are you in favor of the project, including the affordable housing component that is proposed?
Well, no, I haven't been following it, but I I used to look at the news about it, like I'd look it up online. I can't stand it, ain't no newspaper no more, but unless you go online, you ain't get no news. And every now and then I I was wondering about, I used to have a friend of mine named Joe Massey, he lived down the street on on Water Street. And it was plant there and all that kind of stuff. But then they said the land was bad or something and they was trying to, somebody else was trying to do something with it, but they found out that the land was bad and they needed to do something there. I don't think that's the place to put any housing. Me, myself, that's on Front Street. You should have some lively going on where people see, hey, this is Ypsilanti. And that's a nice piece of land. I mean, this is just my opinion. And I don't think housing is is the place for that. I mean, you know, that's that's my opinion.
Why do you want to be representative for Ward One at this time and what do you have to offer?
Well, once again, I'll state that I wanted to give it a shot to see what I could do for the city, getting involved internally internally with the city's affairs to help steer it or give it new ideas or so I always love Ypsilanti. It's it's a, I've been here since I was two and a half, wasn't born here, but two and a half was long enough. And I lived on the south side most of the time. My grandmother, I used to drop her off here all the time, Mrs. Roach. She was here almost every city council meeting that they had. And I remember John Barr and Murdoch and Goodman, all these people, Matt Hennessy, when he was city manager. I know a little bit about the history of Ipsy and because I've been here most of my life. And almost all my life. And I I know the people. I just feel like I should go and spark up the city council or do whatever the Lord leave me to do. I usually do things when there's a purpose. And I I seem there's a purpose for this. Somehow I'm led there, you know, like through the walkout and all this kind of stuff. And then I quit school on top of that to say, right after the accomplishment. But I just want to go forth for the city and and try to see something that I can do positive. I'm sixty five now, so I'm getting up there in age. And I know a little bit about this town and matter of fact, I know a lot. And just want to give it my shot, that's all.
What are the top one or two priorities that you think the city needs to address and what are your thoughts on how that might be done?
Top priorities. I don't want to get involved with the tax thing, because I don't know about the tax structure and all that kind of stuff, because I don't own any property, don't pay any attention to that. Unless my mom say something about her taxes or something, or a friend might bring it to my attention, but I don't know. I just, I just think that the the city needs to grow more. Population wise, to me, and I could be wrong, and just just my opinion, like they threw away the Ypsilanti Braves and put in the Grizzlies and all that kind of stuff. I thought that was so crazy. What happened? You just go and cut off all these people that were alumnis and bring in some little strange name that, I mean, they had Phoenix before, I remember that. And but if they had a problem with the Indians, just take the S off and Ypsilanti brave, you can be brave anywhere. And I'm just saying that I thought that was very stupid, but it's not, you know, I wasn't running things. And like I said, you can complain when you're on the outside. But I'm trying to get on the inside to see if I can do something, so. I don't know if I answered your question, but I can't remember everything you said.
What does public service mean to you?
I've been doing that all my life, serving. Hardly getting paid for it and all that kind of stuff. I know my worth, I tell you that, I know my worth. Serving, trying to help people. Make a, I wanted, I wanted to help make Ypsilanti one of the best little cities in the state of Michigan, that's all.
Question nine, have you have you ever been a member of a city commission? If so, did you participate to the best of your ability?
City commission? No, not no city, nothing, I don't think. No.
How long have you lived in the city of Ypsilanti?
Ever since nineteen fifty seven. Like I said, I was two and a half years old. My mom came here from Illinois, where I'm born, Champaign, Illinois. I just, I'm, you know, I'm inactive member of the IBPOE, Harry Parks Lodge sixteen eighty one. I was brought in there by Harry Parks himself. I know there's a lot of things placed closed down. I'm an inactive member of the Ypsilanti J C's. Like I said, I ran against U of Tate, Booker, Booker Tate. I think it was nineteen eighty three. I really didn't want to, because she helped support my Ypsilanti song. My main purpose there, and I told her and I wrote her two long pages. The reason why I ran and the reason why I ran is just to inspire somebody else to run. If Lee can run, anybody can run. That's the way I looked at it, because I was trying to, I was doing everything. I didn't care. I was young and I was full of, let me do, I'll tell you who reminds me of me sometime when I see him. Gaines is his name. I think he's a rapper or something like that. He did an Ypsilanti song and he reminds me of me a little bit when I was younger of hungry, hungered to do something. And I admire him for that. I remember when.
Question eleven. What makes Ypsilanti valuable to entities outside of the city? What are, excuse me, what are our greatest assets as a city?
Greatest asset, I believe, is the people. If you get certain people in certain positions, they can move mountains if they got that faith and courage and stick to itness to do it. I remember talking with ex-leaders years ago, Mr. Beatty, Dr. S L Roberson, A P Marshall, all these people, like a lot of my paintings are at Park Ridge Community Center. I'm also an artist that paints and records still. My daughter, my son, most of my kids are into music. But I believe the greatest asset is the people. And giving the people somewhat what they want will keep the people somewhat content, because you're gonna make everybody happy. But I forgot the first, the first question was what now?
What makes Ypsilanti valuable to entities outside of the city?
Well, the education. People come from overseas and all these other places to go to Eastern Michigan University as well as surrounding areas like Washington and U of M. There's opportunity for businesses, because I see a lot of vacant areas that should be filled up. You know, the economy need to be stimulated as such. And I think I got an idea how to do it, but if I told you, you wouldn't need me.
And the final question, what is the greatest responsibility of a city council person in the city of Ypsilanti?
Greatest responsibility? Well, I guess as a city councilman, to to uphold yourself as such, okay, if you go wear the shoes, you got to so so-called play the part. And we all, ain't nobody perfect. We all fall now and then, but at the same time, you do the best you can, best you can to be right, to do right by the city and its people, the reason why they hired you in the first place. And to do your best to further enhance the city. And its problems rectify.
Okay, that concludes the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ossler.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ossler. Appreciate you, your application, appreciate you coming in for the interview. And congratulations on the beautiful artwork that hangs on the walls of Park Ridge. Beautiful. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Ossler, I'm all about, Mr. Ossler, I'm all about pawning ideas off as my own, so, you know.
Oh, okay. Well, you know what I'm saying? I'm open, you know, I'm willing to work with anybody, you know, it ain't always my thing and all this kind of stuff. I just want to help. Shake and bake if I can, you know.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ossler.
And I believe Clerk Hilinga is going to put you in the waiting room and for a minute or two. Clerk Hilinga, how do you plan to do that?
So you could just stay put there. I'm just gonna reassign you to to be a attendee.
Okay, what does that mean? I'm sorry.
You could just stay in your seats. Yep, and council will deliberate.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, counsel, we have heard all of the the applicants discussion. Counselor Member Morgan.
Well, I I I am grateful that we've had three fine candidates apply and go through the interview process. I did hear three, I I heard things from each candidate that that were special and and unique in its own way. I did hear some follow up from Brian Jones Chance with his, based on some of his experience on council and 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 his intentions to continue that. But Mr. Gaines, in my opinion, it seems that he has a pulse with people. And with Mr. Ossler, it appears he has some wisdom and and city knowledge. So all those things are pretty valuable. And I think they were all professional in answering the questions and so I'm I'm open to delivering, but I just want to appreciate all those three gentlemen for taking the time out.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go if no one else will go. Yeah, I agree, you know, each interview brought different, you know, perspectives. I do think one candidate stood out as the most prepared for the job. I think that would be Brian Jones Chance. And I'm eager to support him again.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? This is our time to deliberate. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Um, yeah, I just want to thank the candidates, all three of them, again, for applying to potentially be my ward mate. So that's exciting that I'll have a partner in crime again. And I think that, kind of like what Councilmember Morgan said, you know, I heard things from each individual that were valuable. Some historical knowledge, some foresight, you know, forward thinking. And, yeah, I'm just appreciative that we have individuals who are interested in serving. It's a difficult task and sometimes it feels hard to find individuals who are even interested in doing this job. And so I'm thankful for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons.
I also want to thank all three candidates. It's not easy to put yourself out there. And I agree, I I actually enjoyed listening to each of them. I think they all could add value in different ways, but I appreciate their interest and willingness to participate.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Will Cox.
As I say, that just leaves me, right?
Yes, it does.
This is an interesting cohort of candidates and I want to thank them as well. You know, very different people, very different experiences in the living in our city. Some of the answers were the same. Voiced in, you know, their individual voices, but I think some of the themes are the same. You know, the the idea that, you know, the value of our city is is the people. And I would agree with that. I I do have a candidate in mind that I think is the best prepared and and brings skills that the city desperately needs. And I think that's Brian Jones Chance. And so I will support him.
Okay. All right, council, this is our time to deliberate. And I'd like to know if we deliberate tonight and vote tonight, or if you want to extend the deliberation until our meeting on December first. Councilmember Somerville.
Um, yeah, I'm interested in moving forward with voting tonight, if others are. I think it would be best for the preparedness for the next meeting as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Have thoughts on that? Okay. All right, would you like to make, is your hand up or you're just throwing it up?
Yeah, I was just, it's a good saying, I agree, I mean, I.
Okay. Would you like to make that a motion?
Sure, I move to nominate Brian Jones Chance to the seat for Ward One vacancy.
I support.
It's been moved in second, so a discussion on the motion.
Sure, I'll add something to that. I think I already kind of indicated it, but I do think that we have some really important issues coming up that we've already been working on a bit, but I do think that Mr. Jones Chance is the most prepared and he does bring a different perspective to counsel that other members, you know, we don't have that. So I do think that it is a huge benefit to us as a team as we continue to grow and move forward. And I do think that it, you know, his willingness to apply for the short-term appointment before really shows his dedication to our city.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Morgan.
Just want to say for the record that again, I do want to say how absolutely gentlemanlike and fair it was of a former councilmember, Brian Jones Chance, to drop his name out of the hat and will belong in the trust of process. I thought that was extremely humane and fair. Regardless of the outcome of the election. And again, it's the pulse of the people regardless. I think city council has had an array of characters, of people with strong points and weak points that made up a body of people that still ran the city. Regardless of one person, it doesn't sway any group decision. So I do think, again, I I would not be remiss in in just stating for the record that Brian appeared to be very well at what he did when he had an opportunity to do it. And other people, if they had the opportunity to do it, I think would probably take that opportunity just as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Clerk Colanga, would you call the role on the motion? And the motion is to appoint applicant Brian Jones Chance to the Ward One seat. Councilmember Simmons, was your hand up or were you just adjusting your glasses?
Yep, sorry, no, that was just, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, Clerk Colanga, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Would you bring the panelists back for us to now, Mr. Barr, how should we handle that? I think you're muted, Mr. Barr.
You have made your decision and so it's a a a public record. The thing that happens next is that the successful applicant will have to be sworn in and sign the oath of office. I'm not sure where Brian Jones Chance, councilmember, is right now. Are you in City Hall or someplace else?
I'm, I've just promoted Councilmember Jones Chance to panelist. So we could provide him the oath of office and he could sign it tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow.
That would, that would be fine.
Okay, all right. Once again, I would, I, well, I will say congratulations, Councilmember Brian Jones Chance. Thank you again for applying and congratulation on being willing to come back and fill in that seat. And we look forward to working, working with you as councilmember for Ward One. Want to, once again, thank the other two applicants. I don't know if they're still in, are they still in the waiting room or can they hear us?
It appears Mr. Gaines has left the attendees. And I believe Mr. Ossler was still in council.
Okay. Just want to say thanks to both of them for their interest. Thanks for their diligence in applying. And would certainly invite both of them to remain active in city, in the city and in the community. And invite them to share their ideas and suggestions with council. And if there are things that we can, council can move upon, that we will certainly take those suggestions and ideas to heart and look at them and see what we, see if there are some things that we can advance with. So I just thanks everyone for coming and appreciate it. And Clerk Colanga, is that the end of the agenda?
That is the end of the agenda. I was going to provide Councilmember Jones Chance's oath of office.
All right, thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Jones Chance.
Hereby accept the office.
Hereby accept the office.
Of councilmember Ward One.
Of councilmember Ward One.
And further.
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And I will enforce the laws of the United States.
State of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations once again.
Thanks for all your support and believing I can do this job. I I hope I, hope I do it well. I would just like to make a note, though, this, this was a minor thing before. But you, I don't use honorific titles, it's a religious thing. And so you do not have to call me councilmember. And if I don't call you councilmember or councilperson, it's it's not out of disrespect.
Hey, yay, I like being called Annie, so.
Whoa, whoa, church and state, whoa, I need to hear that, I'm just joking, it's okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember Brian Jones Chance. Welcome. And the first meeting will be on December the first. This is that, that is this coming Tuesday. And look forward to having you there. And Francis, I mean, Council, City Manager McMullen. Or Christopher, could you help me with the time of the meeting on Tuesday? I, is it this Tuesday that we are calling a special session at six o'clock?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I don't know if everyone has received that notice yet, but meeting, we're going to have a work session on Tuesday, December the first at six o'clock for council. And I hope everyone will be able to to be there. I know it's a little bit short notice, but it is, it is quite important that we have this work session. And I hope everyone will get their notice. And the agenda, I believe, went out today. So if you would look at the agenda for Tuesday, I believe the clerk will forward that to you, Councilmember Jones Chance. And so, okay. And everyone, if, yes, if everyone's mind is clear, I will declare.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. I declared.
Stay home. I said be safe and stay home, avoid your family.
Yes, yes. And just before we do go, I would like to say to everyone that we stay safe, stay well, wear your mask and encourage others to to wear their masks this holiday season. And we will see everyone on December the first. Thank you. A happy holiday, happy Thanksgiving and a fantastic weekend. Bye-bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Yeah, did you want to talk?
I will give you, if you will give me a call on my cell.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, thank you. This is all new, I'm trying to, okay.